Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this evening's ASNC Board of Trustees Cabinet Forum. My name is Benai Ashevers. I am an ASNC Senator here for NIC Student Government. The Associated Students of North Idaho College is hosting this candidate forum tonight to inform the students, faculty, staff, and community members about the candidates for this year's North Idaho College Board of Trustees election. ASNC believes in providing all students with the ability to refine their academic skills through reading, writing, speaking, and thinking to advance their knowledge of the major disciplines in language, arts, mathematics, science, history, as well as the professional technical programs here at NIC. Our goal tonight is to learn more about each of these candidates by providing a formal questioning and answering time period. North Idaho College meets the diverse educational needs of students, employers, and the North Idaho communities. It serves through a commitment to student success, educational excellence, community engagement, and lifelong learning. I'd like to introduce tonight's panel, who will be asking a few questions to the candidates. We have myself as a student representative. The faculty representative is Patrick Lippert, who is a philosophy instructor here at NIC. Please give a wave of the hand. The staff representative for NIC is Erin Norville. She is an employment and training coordinator. And the community representative is Bob Kep, the Coeur d'Alene Chamber of Commerce Public Policy Committee member. All right. Mark Browning, the Vice President of Communications and Marketing here at NIC, will also be speaking tonight. And with that, we'd like to get started by introducing the candidates to you. We will start with Judy Meyer and go from the left to the right. Please take one minute to introduce yourself to the audience.
I'm Judy Meyer, and I'm running for trustee position A. Good enough. I'm going to read a slightly longer introduction here. And it'll probably be the only thing I read tonight, but it feels a little weird bragging about yourself, and I've been told that's essentially what you do. My name is Paul Matthews. I'm also running for position A. I have lived in Cootney County, in the Twin Lakes area, for over 22 years. I am an architect, and I have an office in Rathdrom. I am a political and community activist. I have served on the Cootney County Historic Preservation Commission, Cootney County Planning and Zoning Commission, the Cootney County Capital Plan Advisory Committee. Rathdrom Building Code Appeal Born as President of the Rathdrom Chamber of Commerce. I co-founded, along with my wife Shelley L.A.M., Christian School, and also the Rathdrom Westwood Historical Society. I've been named a Rathdrom Citizen of the Year three times, a Panhandle State Bank Community Star, and a Thomas Jefferson Citizen Architect by the American Institute of Architects. I have served for the past eight years as a precinct committeeman for the Cootney County Republican Party. My wife and I have been married for 26 years, and we have two college-aged children, both of whom attended NIC.
I'm Mick Arman. I'm running for seat C, or excuse me, seat B, on North Idaho College Board of Trustees. I'm married to my wife Lori. We've lived in Coeur d'Alene for the past 21 years. We have five grown children and one grandson. I'm a graduate of Montana State University with a degree in environmental microbiology, and I'm also a certified financial planner. I've been the past Chair of the Coeur d'Alene Chamber of Commerce in 1999 to 2000. Thank you Y2K made things a little more exciting that year. I've been a Rotarian for 31 years. I've been involved in numerous other activities around Coeur d'Alene and Cootney County, and I'm a three-time Iron Man.
I wish I could say I was an Iron Man. I'm Fritz Wiedenhoff, and I'm running for position C. Basically, I'm going to steal Judy's script on that one and just change the name and seat position.
I never even thought about doing Iron Man. My name is Ron Nielsen, husband of my wife Pam for 40 years. I'm a father of five children. They all live in Spokane. I'm a grandfather of nine children, one in the oven right now. I'm a community leader. I'm involved in about 12, 10 to 12 boards. I'm a major employer here. I have about 200 employees here in the greater Idaho area. Been Citizen of the Year at Post Falls, been Company of the Year in Post Falls, and currently the President of the Post Falls Chamber. So glad to be here.
I'm Vicky Ambrosi, and I'm running for seat C for the Board of Trustees.
Good evening. I'm Gary Kaufman. I'm also running for seat C for the Board of Trustees. Thank you, ASNC, for hosting this event, and I want to say that I've been a resident of Coeur d'Alene for 35 years. I've had some experience on a large board through the United Way of Cootney County, and was President of that board for two years, was Volunteer of the Year for one year. I also, after retiring just two years ago, spent 33 years as an employee at North Idaho College directing a variety of student services departments. So I feel like I know the institution real well, and through student services, I've gotten to know thousands of students really well also. Thank you.
I'm Dean Hagenson, also candidate for position C. I'm Idaho native, born in Bonner Ferry and raised on a small farm nearby. I'm a graduate of the University of Idaho, degree in mechanical engineering, and I'm the founder and owner of Contractors Northwest, a mid-sized general contractor here in town. We started it with nothing, and we still got it. Actually, we've been moderately successful in working throughout the Northwest, and I'm very excited about the prospect of joining the board and hopefully contributing to maintaining the excellence and improving on it at North Idaho College.
All right. Thank you, candidates. I'd like to point out that in your program, there are lists of the candidates and which seats they are running for, as well as they are listed up here. The note cards that you see with the pens are to take any notes, but most importantly, if you have any questions, there will be an audience question period. We will have some screeners and runners that will be collecting them at the end of these opening statements, which we are about to dive into. So please take the time, if you come up with any questions, to write them down, and we will collect them shortly. We'd like to go from the right to the left now, and take two minutes each for an opening statement, please. So we'll start with you, Dean Hagenson.
I guess I'm a little confused. I was thinking we were doing that a minute ago. Well, as I said, I'm excited about the idea of being on the board. Some of the things I see as challenges out there for us is funding, obviously. The state has, their contribution continues to drop and leaving the burden on the local taxpayers and the students. And I think we have to, we have to get the state back to contributing its historical levels. I also see facilities. The student population has grown by 50% over the last five, six years, and in order to accommodate that, there's going to have to be some new facilities. I think perhaps my experience as a contractor can be of some benefit to reviewing those possibilities as they come forward. And budgeting, having had to develop budgets for 37 years and do our best to live by them, I think I understand budgets and can be perhaps helpful in that area. About all I would say, except to repeat, that I'm excited about the prospect and think I can bring something to the board.
Thank you very much, Dean. Gary?
I've got a long association with North Idaho College, and it's been a real positive one. This is a great place. It's involved a lot of amazing employees that have contributed to helping students. It's involved countless students who are amazing individuals that are often making tremendous sacrifices for an opportunity to improve their lives through education. It's been a great opportunity to observe that close hand and to lend assistance in many ways. In supervising a variety of student services departments, I got to have close contact with students and discover a lot of what were barriers for students, understand pretty well the value of student success and the many things that serve as obstacles to student success. I know that a lot of the emphasis is placed on access, affordability, providing the programs for students, but it's going to be real essential that we pay a great deal of attention to the ability of students to succeed in those opportunities as well. So I want to try to bring a depth of understanding about students and the issues of student success to the board and feel that that would be a helpful perspective.
Thank you, Gary. Vicky?
My family and I moved to Post Falls, Idaho 19 years ago after my husband retired from the Navy. We came to Post Falls hoping to find a good place to raise our family, four children, and to have a good place for education. We succeeded on both counts. I chose to run for seat C because I would like to give back something of significance to the college and to the community that has been so supportive of my family for 19 years.
Thank you, Vicky. Ron?
It doesn't take much to turn something good to great, and one of the things that's happened that has made this college going to go from great to excellent was the acquisition and the decision to hire Joe Dunlap. Today, we've been watching the news, listening to what's going on. The big argument is, is in the presidential race, state race, local races, is jobs, jobs, jobs. This is one of the primary functions of this institution here, which is to prepare our children, our students, or our adults that don't have the skills to be able to get the jobs that we need to have. It's real good for me, it'd be easy for me to tell you all about creating jobs, because we've created about 150 jobs in the last couple of years here. But don't listen to what I say, listen to what I've done, which is, we've started K-Tech. I led the effort to start this Technical Education Campus on the Prairie. We just completed building the Boys and Girls Club, Chairman of a Manufacturing Consortium, how we can drive more jobs in economy here. I was hand-pointed by the Governor to sit on an organization called Pinwar, which is an economic development group for five states, five provinces. But one of the things I'd like to read real quickly is from our Governor. This comes from Butch Otter, says, "Nobody brings more passion, more common sense, more business savvy, or more skin in the game to creating jobs, preparing our workforce, and growing our community and state than Ron Nielsen. He not only believes in Idaho future, he invests in it. I've traveled across the world with Ron promoting Idaho, our products, and our people. I know firsthand that he's second to none in his commitment to growing our economy and clearing the way for a brighter future." That's from the man himself. So I'm humbled by this opportunity to have there, to share some opportunities. What I think we can do is to take this college from now, an excellent college, and the leadership of Dunlap, but the even better yet by having an opportunity.
Ron, we're out of time for you, but thank you so much. Fritz?
Again, I'm Fritz Wiedenhoff, and I'd like to thank everybody, especially the community members that have come out to listen to us talk this evening. That means a lot. It's an investment in your time, because this is truly what it is, is a community college. This is all of our college, belongs to the entire community. I'm running for seat trustee, seat C. A little bit more about myself, I'm a longtime resident of Cootney County. I attended the schools here, went to Hayden Elementary, graduated from Klein High School, and in fact, I graduated from this institution, too. I attended North Idaho College on a couple of different fronts. I attended the academic side and the vocational, technical side. I know what a fine institution this is. I also attended Idaho State University. I currently serve the public as a career firefighter with Northern Lakes Fire, and I work part-time for the county at the Coeur d'Alene Airport as a mechanic and operations specialist. I know and I believe in public service. I know what it's all about. Why am I running? Well, in short, it's to help and serve, and I think I have a lot to bring to the table and to offer. Part of that is since I'm a vested member and interested in this community, as I have three wonderful children. My oldest daughter, Ashley, is 17 years old, and she currently attends North Idaho College as a dual-enrolled student from Lakeland High School. We live in the Rathdrom area, so I believe that my children, I would like to see all three of them attend this fine institution. One of which, that's one of the reasons I'd like to be, serve a member on this board and be part of the decision-making process. In fact, I can see all three of my children attending this institution. This gives me a unique opportunity to look into, kind of a bird's-eye view of this institution, and that makes me a huge stakeholder, interested in keeping going. As a previous student, I also understand that that gives me another opportunity to see it. Keeping access for NIC for all students is another priority, as is identifying and realizing that they're changing needs for the students and the industry that's going to take those students. We need to make sure that those opportunities, those changing opportunities are formed in with the educational needs and desires today.
Thank you very much, Fritz. Mick?
Good evening. I'm Mick Arman, and like I said, I'm running for seat B as a boy. Good evening, and thank you to ASNC for hosting this very important chance to hear each of the candidates' thoughts on the future of NIC. I'd also like to shout out Andy and his video crew, so that those that aren't here, and there's a lot that aren't, that will have the same opportunity that you do to see this played over again on Channel 19 later this week and into next week as we come up to the election. I look forward to hearing the questions that are on the minds of citizens here tonight, but I do regret that my opponent chose not to participate. It makes it very difficult to learn what his view of NIC would be if he chooses not to attend any North Idaho College Board meetings, nor a forum like this, or the other forum that was held earlier this week, or this month. I do have a passion for education, and I have seen firsthand how NIC does change lives every day. I am running for reelection on the NIC Board because I believe I have the knowledge, the vision, and the experience to continue to lead this college for the next four years. The knowledge I have has been from the privilege of serving on the Board of Trustees for the past 12 years. Over the past 12 years, and the past two as the Chairman of the Board, I have seen a lot of changes in North Idaho College. We've talked about the enrollment increase already. We've seen 46% increase in enrollment this in the last four years, but we've also seen times when it wasn't growing that fast, and we've had to be able to adjust to both. Experience, I've served on a number of boards throughout Cootney County, and I've also been branch manager for 34 years as a financial planner. And vision, I do have the vision to lead this college. We've had, like I said, some interesting times in the last 12 years. There's going to be a lot more interesting times to come. We had the vision to buy the education corridor, which I think was one of the greatest things that ever happened to this college, and I look forward to serving North Idaho College in the future. NIC is not broken, and we need to continue to make it one of the best community colleges in America. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mick. Paul?
Yeah, I'd also like to thank the Associated Students for inviting us. As I look out over the audience here, I notice you're all very diligent. You're either taking notes or checking Facebook. I'm not sure which. In any case, it's a pleasure to be here, and this is an essential forum, I think. I'm running for three reasons primarily. And the first is to bring a sense of fiscal conservatism back to this board. The second is to provide some geographical diversity to the board. And the third is to bring some clarity, or I should say greater clarity, to the mission of North Idaho College. And specifically, when I speak about fiscal conservatism, since from 2005, 2011, we had about a 73% increase in the burden on the taxpayer for this school. Maybe justified, maybe not, but that came at the same time as there was a 9% drop in county income in Cootney County. I am very aware that every time there's a tax raise, it's a pay cut to a struggling family. In terms of geographical diversity, for some time now, the board has been represented by trustees from a relatively small area of the county. 25% of the students come from outside the county. The majority come from outside the city of Coeur d'Alene, and yet, our representation all comes from the same K-12 school district. Finally, I'd say clarity to the school's mission. I mean, what you want to see is a capital improvement plan aligning with the strategic plan, and spending priorities also aligning with both of those in lockstep. And you don't ever want to be left with a question about why spending is happening when it doesn't seem to be coming out of a strategic plan. Anyway, that's primarily why I'm in the race.
Thank you very much, Paul. Judy?
Thank you, ASNC, for inviting me to share my qualifications. Steve and I came here in the late '60s after I graduated from college in the Midwest. My first interaction with NIC was as a volunteer coach for the women's field hockey team. Once on campus, I became interested in the community college concept. Soon, faculty members began adding, asking me to substitute teach in English, Political Science, and Drama. Raising two sons and starting our own commercial real estate development business ignited my passion for the value of education. As a member of the League of Women Voters, I lobbied legislators for the state kindergarten funds in public schools. As a businesswoman, we learned the needs and challenges of small businesses choosing lease space in our office, industrial, and retail developments. My first elected position was the Hayden Library Board of Trustees. During my terms, our board managed growing from one library to a regional system of seven branches. That's the second-largest library in the state, after Boise Public Library. The balance between growing a popular service and managing the local property tax support has been an important experience. In 1984, I was a founding member of the Hospice Board, the first hospice in Idaho. My interest in healthcare led to being elected to the Corporate Board of Directors for Blue Cross of Idaho. In the early '90s, I was elected to the NIC Board. A few years later, the Governor appointed me to the Idaho State Board of Education. This board has oversight governance responsibility for all of education in Idaho, including the four universities, all public schools, and professional technical programs. I served as President of the State Board in 1999. After serving on the State Board of Education, I realized the wonderful strengths of the unique local control we have with community college districts. I was elected again to the NIC Board and have served there during a period of remarkable growth in the college and through the challenges of the current recession. Your college board has done a great job of making the most of our available resources in the last six years. Enrollment grew 46%. We had to choose between enrollment caps and raising revenue. We were able to hold operating budget growth to 23%.
Thank you very much, Judy. Now, we will be asking the candidates four questions each, and Bob Kep will be asking the first question to Paul Matthews. Go ahead.
Paul? Do you feel that the NIC trustees should have a controlling interest in creating curriculum, and what is your stance on tenure for instructors?
Kind of a compound question. To the first one, controlling interest in creating, I'd say maybe selecting, the Board of Education takes the lead a lot of times in the curriculum area for good reason, which is that we are a two-year college. Ultimately, these credits are transferring to the other universities, and so you do need to defer to board education for some continuity there. Although, in terms of selection, also the idea of a junior college or community college is that it is local, and it addresses local needs. So yeah, you have to have a strong presence in the selection of curriculum. On the issue of tenure, that's an interesting topic. I'll use interesting the way Mick used interesting to describe the last few years. It's a hot topic for a lot of people. As I look at tenure, and it's really two different things. On the one hand, it's suggested that it's in place to protect academic freedom, and my own opinion is, eh, it's a little bit questionable. It's a method of protecting academic freedom, a bit like a thermonuclear weapon is a method of pruning a rose bush. I mean, it's a really broad way of protecting academic freedoms. I think it has historical reasons that it's there, but the question of whether it's effective, I mean, by some arguments, is actually less than effective, ineffective. I'm running out of time here, so I'll say really quickly, though. But the thing about tenure is, although there's that end, what it is on the other end is what Mick Arman's line of work, they call a golden handcuff. It's foundational to how instructors approach decisions about where their families will go, what institutions they'll work at. So it's not something you monkey around with. So in that sense, no. In terms of tenure, it has a good aspect and a fundamental, a fundamental aspect and a somewhat overworked aspect.
Thank you very much, Paul. Now, Erin Norville, she will be asking Judy, Dean, Vicky, Mick, Gary, and Fritz all the same question. Go ahead and take the floor, Erin.
What is the importance of the future of the education corridor to you? And part two is what buildings would be on your priority list?
We'll start with Judy.
Well, obviously, I believe in the importance of the education corridor, because I was on the board when we made the choice to, in fact, invest in that land, and I think it was a good investment. It provides us the geography to provide now services, fortunately, hopefully, for many years to come, like maybe all the way through the century. And so acquiring the land provides us the opportunity then for facilities. And in addition to facilities for the campus, I would highlight it's a community college, and so the community has lots more access to the waterfront and more access to facilities that we will be building here. Right now, we're looking at professional technical programs and the need for facilities there. We're not sure where. We're in the process of getting a study as to where would be the most cost-effective and accessible place. We're looking at the Joint Use Building, because we partner with the University of Idaho and Lewis Clark State College, so that students at NIC can move on in through the system. That may be a possibility. We'll be asking the Legislature to help us with that. There's always the question of sports facilities, and so I think there are many opportunities for growth and facilities, and we don't have, as a board now, a determinant of which building. I think in time, we look forward to having many facilities on that site.
Thank you very much, Judy. Now, Dean, would you like to have the question repeated?
Well, I think in time, we'll look back at the creation of the education corridor and believe that was one of the best things we ever did. I think it's going to be very, very important for the future of NIC and for the other institutions. As far as the priority of buildings, it's my understanding that the joint-use facility that would provide space for the University of Idaho, LCSC, and North Idaho College would be pretty high on the priority list.
All right. Vicky?
Whether or not one agrees with the purchase of the education corridor is an accomplished fact. Time will tell if it was a wise decision. In the meantime, given the current economic climate, I don't envision any new construction at this time.
Thank you very much. Mick?
Well, obviously, I believe very strongly in the purchase of the education corridor, because I was on the board at that point in time also. If you look at the geography of North Idaho College, we have a lake on one side, a river on the other side, development, housing development, the fort grounds on the other side, and then we have a mill. And the only way that we were ever going to grow geographically was to buy the property. So I think it was the opportunity for the future, no matter when that future becomes. What are the priorities? Well, we've already heard a couple of them, the Joint Use Building, and also the idea of a professional technical facility on there. But a couple of others that I'll throw out there, there's been a lot of discussion in the past about Student Recreation Center that we might look at. We've talked about a joint facility with the Coeur d'Alene Tribe, celebrating their heritage, and I think the future generations will determine what other facilities will go on there. But one we know that will be on there come the spring is we're going to have a community garden to share with the community.
Thank you very much, Mick. Gary?
I can remember back when, early Facility Master Plans, we're struggling with issues of where to put buildings, including using up what little green space we had on campus in order to accommodate those, and struggling with how to figure out how to handle parking when parking garages are an extremely expensive facility to fund. The acquisition of the mill property was an amazing move towards the future of North Idaho College, and I think it opens up lots of opportunities down the road, and that was an essential move, and I'm glad that the board at that time took that measure. In terms of facilities, one of the things that's been talked about for a long time is some facility to centralize the student services on campus. Right now, those services are scattered all across campus. Enrollment-related services are utilized by students, by all students, every semester, and there's many other services that are provided for students to promote student success and help, critically help, many students toward success in that manner.
Thank you very much, Gary. I'd like to move on to Fritz, please.
The future of the education corridor is important to everyone, not just me. It truly is a community, a community item. The potential of it, many of them are listed in the master plan for the corridor, are staggering, and all of which appear to be positive. Many of it points to the dramatic fiscal impacts that are positive, that would be, as opposed to if it was commercially developed. That's a good thing. It's apparent the education corridor is here, and the potential needs to be embraced and utilized as fullest potential. As for what buildings would be on my priority list, well, I have an idea for that, and currently, I look at the master plan that's currently in use, and it began in 2006, and it took a year and a half, which means it's thorough and well-thought-out, but that means it's been in place for four years, over four years. There's been a lot of development, a lot of growth down there. I feel that maybe one of the first things that should happen is it should be reviewed, not scrapped or redone, reviewed, and ensure that what is in there and what is being planned and updated to reflect any maybe unforeseen changes or things that need to be done. With that, should include all parties, like North Idaho College, LCSC, University of Idaho, Lake City Development Corporation, the city of Coeur d'Alene, and the community should all come together.
Fritz, thank you very much, but we're out of time. We'd like to ask Paul one more question, and Erin, would you, or Bob, excuse me, would I be so kind?
Okay, Paul. How crucial is the importance of diversity and tolerance to a community college like NIC, and what are your views on diversity and tolerance?
Again, another compound question, it's like it's twice the time, right? I don't think so. Well, obviously, diversity is important to me. As I said, that's one of the reasons I'm running. I'd like to see greater diversity on the board. And tolerance is a little bit more interesting. I'm a Republican, and at our first convention, we nominated a guy by the name of Abraham Lincoln, you know, to run for president, and he gave this speech, it was called the "House Divided" speech, and he quoted scripture, and he said, "A house divided cannot stand this nation, cannot remain permanently half-slave and half-free," which is just an amazing statement of intolerance, when you think about it. I mean, what he's saying there is that sometimes there are absolutes that both people need to defend, and they won't give one. What I can say that it's very much like tolerance, that I will absolutely have a zero-tolerance policy on when I become a trustee, is any incivility and any infringements on academic freedom. And I think that's a lot of times in the academic setting, when people are looking for tolerance, they're really looking for academic freedom, because things that we do here in the academy are a little bit different than what's done outside. Sometimes they're misunderstood, and so I will certainly be intolerant of any encroachments on academic freedom.
Thank you very much, Paul. I'd like to ask one question, one question as a student representative. This question is for Judy, Paul, Dean, Mick, Gary, Fritz, Ron, and Vicki.
Wow.
So, we'll start with Judy again. What are your views on professional technical education?
Professional technical education is valuable. We've already identified it as something we, as a community college, want to develop and tend to. We need to keep that in balance with the academic programs that we have, where our students choose. About 80 percent of our programs are academic, academic transfer, or degrees and certificates along the way. That doesn't mean we ignore professional technical. We need to understand what the labor market tells us, what occupations are coming along so we're ready for them. Just today, our president sent an article from the USA Today talking about the employment opportunities for professional technical are often more than they are for the four-year students at this time. So, as a college, we will be focusing on keeping in balance the need to deliver those services along with the academic.
Thank you very much. Paul?
I'm included in this one. Great. Yeah, thanks. Professional technical, obviously, is important and critical. Sometimes we try and weigh it against the academic programs. I don't see it that way. What I do see, though, is sometimes we treat it differently, and we tend to evaluate academic programs through an educational outcome-based methodology, and then we tend to look at market methodology for protex. In other words, we say, what jobs are we getting the protex people, and how well are you performing these tasks for the general education people? And I think that creates a huge amount of difficulty in planning for the school. I think we need to use both methods, both modes, to determine both sides of the equation.
All right. Thank you very much, Paul. Mick, please.
I would agree with Paul. I think, you know, the professional technical education cannot really be separated from the academic transfer side of it. I think they're both high-quality educations now, and I think they will continue to be. I think one thing we do need to do with professional technical is do a complete review of our facilities. I think if we have one area that we have failed a bit on as an institution is we haven't kept up to date on our facilities in a lot of our, particularly the trade side of professional technical education. We do have a request out right now with an architect to review these. I think it's going to be interesting to see what we come back to, but I think we need to be sure that the facilities, the students that are in professional technical have the same opportunity that the students that have in the academic transfer. I also think we have to be real cognizant of the changing workforce out there. I think a good example of that is the grant that we just received for the aircraft or the airframe repair and also the composites that's going to go into place here in another 12 to 18 months. I think we need to continue to look at the workforce. We need to continue to look at the changing job opportunities out there and continue to grow the programs.
Thank you very much, Mick. Fritz?
My views on professional technical education are very positive, very strong, and very supportive. These are keystone programs that a community college like North Idaho College has, develops, and excels with, turning out the very best work-ready employees that the industry needs. It's no secret that NIC has had and continues to provide some of the finest, most up-to-date professional technical education available. One really unique advantage to a VOTEC over traditional college education is graduates are often able to directly enter the workforce, often at times when employers are in desperate need of waiting on these skilled workers. Thus, fuels our economy and drives our community.
Thank you very much, Fritz. Ron?
I failed to mention I'm seat C, so we'll get that out early. So, it's real easy, when the community calls you the champion of professional technical education, to see what my view is at. I spend a lot of my time, a lot of my energy reintroducing professional technical education back to what has been somewhat lost in our society, that the jobs of today are in professional technical, the jobs of yesterday were in professional technical, and the jobs of tomorrow will be in professional technical. You can't stop that. This is a country that continues to grow in manufacturing and certain skill sets from certified nurses assistants and whatever that is. These are the PTE jobs of today and tomorrow, and we need to be able to raise this from our institution here, from 11 to 13 percent, where they've been running, to get up with the national average of what we need to be at professional technical, which is much higher, and you can talk to Mr. Dunlap about the success they've had in Spokane.
Thank you very much, Ron. Vicki?
I am convinced that professional technical education, or PTE, provides technical skills and knowledge necessary for so many of our youth, military veterans, or simply those who wish to find a more rewarding career in today's workplace. It includes what we used to call vocational technical training, which includes such crucial programs as office technology and automotive technology. I wholeheartedly support the program.
Thank you, Vicki. Gary?
Professional technical programs are tied to jobs. That's the perspective that a lot of people have, and hopefully strongly tied to local jobs. And they need to keep pace with the change of technology out there so that they can continue to have a strong connection with jobs. That said, I think one of the big aspects is how well they fulfill the needs of students. Students often are looking for a shorter training opportunity that will connect them with employment. They've already got families. They don't have the opportunity to sit out and work on a long-term degree in order to find employment to support their families, so they're looking for something quick. I think the professional technical programs provide that for them, as well as the realm of interests that are represented by professional technical programs appeals to a lot of students, too, so it definitely fills a need of students in the region.
Thank you, Gary. Dean?
I think that professional technical programs are essentially element of a community college, and there should be access to good, excellent programs, and a fairly wide variety of them, to the extent there's student interest in those variety. I'd like to see the professional technical programs grow and be enhanced, be improved, but that cannot be at the expense of the academic transfer students that represent some 80 percent of the student body here. So, I think it's important. It probably should grow from where it is right now, but we've got to recognize that the students vote with their registrations, right, what they want to take.
Thank you very much, Dean. I'd like to hand the mic over to Pat Lippert, who will be asking Judy, Mick, and Gary.
Thank you. Judy, Mick, and Gary, what do you see as the major challenges facing education, and what would you do to meet them?
I've been first on the panel. Okay, I'll go first. The major challenges to education, well, one of the biggest challenges is going to continue to be affordability. I think affordability is something that the community colleges work very, very diligently to keep in perspective. You know, the mantra of community colleges is affordability and accessibility. We don't want to get to the point where we're closing our doors, nor are we pricing students out. But I think another big opportunity in education is the opportunity of distance learning. The Luna laws that are being up for debate right now talk about the two credits that every high school senior will take online. I think online education is going to become more and more important all the time, but I think we have to make sure that we have quality, and we need to make sure we have the right delivery method. I think if the Luna laws do go into effect, I think we need to look at the community colleges as a great delivery model to deliver those online education opportunities for the high school students. And what better way than to also deliver dual enrollment at the same time and give those high school students the opportunity to start experiencing college?
Thank you, Mick. Gary, please.
Could you repeat the question, please?
What do you see as the major challenges facing education, and what would you do to meet them?
I would certainly echo the issues of funding. Education is expensive, and it's falling more and more onto students. Students are having a hard time affording that, and they're incurring a great debt as part of that. But there's a lot of investments that are going into higher education by the student, by the taxpayers, and I think in order to make sure that we get a strong return on that investment, that we need to pay more attention to student success issues. We need to make sure that the students that begin programs are tied to programs that are meaningful to them, that they are receiving the assistance they need to have efficient education plans so they can get through in a timely fashion and not waste more time and money, and that we are able to increase the completion rate of students so that we know that students are truly benefiting from the programs that we're providing.
Thank you, Gary. Judy?
I would like to highlight to you all the most recent Time Magazine, which focuses on reinventing college, and the theme is the same as we have here. They call it the Iron Triangle, and those are the three issues, three big interrelated problems, access, cost, and quality, the very same things we're talking about, and I see those as our major challenges. I think also, part of our thinking needs to change from seat time to knowledge time, and so dual enrollment, I think, represents that well. It doesn't matter how long you've been in the class, it's when you have the knowledge you can move through the system. I think that will be one of our ways to deal with the funding, which will be an ongoing challenge.
Thank you very much, Judy. I'd like to hand the microphone back over to Erin Norville, who will be asking Judy, Dean, Mick, Gary, Paul, Vicki, and Fritz all the same question. Erin?
Tell us about your higher education experience, and what experiences make you the right choice for the NIC Board of Trustees?
I'd like to start with Judy, please.
Here we go. And the question is, my higher ed experience?
Tell us about your higher education experiences, and what experiences make you the right choice?
Okeydoke. I think I already explained to you, my opportunity to serve on the state board of education helped me see the state level of educational delivery systems and also value the community college because we are our own district. Cootney County is our district. Anyone in that district will now be able to vote for trustees. I've had a chance to serve on library boards that I mentioned to you, public television boards. All that helps me understand the value of academic freedom, and that's such a vital, fundamental part of what community colleges can help our citizens, because in fact, community colleges deal with so many folks. Our average age is 27, so I think my opportunity to help be sure folks have access to that information is, that makes me qualified to be a trustee.
Thank you, Judy. Paul, please.
As far as higher education experience, I guess it starts in, you know, my family being raised. I think both my parents had a total of like 16 years of university education. I certainly place a value on that. In terms of my experience, I'm an architect. I've done somewhere around 250 buildings, and what architects do is similar to what boards do, in the sense that they don't control the means and methods of construction, they control the overall direction of it. This board is tasked, you know, by state mandate with setting up policies, procedures, and regulations, not with the administration of the school. They leave that to others, though they oversee it. So, my background meshes with that really well. I've served on a number of boards in that same capacity also.
Thank you, Paul. Mick?
Well, I don't think you want to know about my higher education background because that's a long time ago and way too much fun, but being as I have five kids, I'll talk a little bit about them. I do have five kids, and they've attended a number of different institutions around the West. Three of them have been at North Idaho College, University of Arizona, George Fox University, University of Phoenix, which is a private school, which we have to start realizing is a competitor, and also Cresta College down in California. But probably the one thing that has really given me the education as a board of trustee is being on the board for 12 years. The learning curve for this position is steep, and it's very, very dangerous at the start, I'll put it that way. The acronyms, the information is a bit overload, but I've been blessed to be able to be on this board for 12 years. I've been really fortunate for the last two years, like I said, to be the board chair, and I've been working with the other two board chairs from College of Southern Idaho and College of Western Idaho, working on statewide initiatives. I feel like I've developed a tremendous amount of information and knowledge that will help me the next four years continue to lead North Idaho College.
Thank you very much, Mick. Fritz?
The highlight of my higher education experience is actually based all here at North Idaho College. I attended here since I attended both vocational side and the academic side. I have a perspective into that that's unique. I also attended Idaho State University. On top of that, having a daughter currently enrolled here, and I would like to see all three of my children actually attend here, that makes me, gives me a perspective into that. The kind of things that make my, or kind of experiences that make me qualified, I believe, and what I can bring to the table are public service, knowing how to do the right thing, knowing when to do the right thing, and knowing that these choices need to be made with what you have from your experiences, and I have mostly all good service public experiences. I have a lot of diversity as well to draw on. That was one of the questions we had talked about. Diversity is also part of the mission statement here at North Idaho College, and I bring a lot of diversity and experience with that.
Thank you, Fritz. Vicki?
Having attended junior college, I understand issues unique to junior college students. I earned several credits at a four-year university. After graduation from a business college, I taught grammar and business skills. My life experiences that make me the right choice include, I have worked with high school special education students with behavioral issues and learning disabilities. I homeschooled my four children, who also attended Department of Defense schools and private schools through high school in preparation for college. I've been a high school-level tutor for 18 years in a nationally accredited homeschool program. I do believe these experiences qualify me to sit on the board of trustees. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki. Gary?
Since I worked at NIC for 33 years, I know the institution pretty well, and I understand community college mission very well. But probably the most important aspect, since I was involved in supervising multiple student services departments and active in enrollment management issues, is the connection between the institution and the student. The people that are on the front line on a regular basis, helping students in terms of their enrollment and selecting classes and making plans, are the ones that see best how effectively the institution is meeting the needs of students. That's an important perspective for a board to have, and I'm the only candidate that brings that with some level of expertise.
Thank you very much, Gary. Dean?
Well, higher education experience, I earlier indicated I was a graduate of the University of Idaho in mechanical engineering. While at the university, I was on the athletic board of control, which was an alumni and student committee that governed athletics at the university. I just lost my rabbit. I have been certainly a devotee of North Idaho College, and I think part of that question is, why should you be selected? And I just, to me, there's four words. I'm dedicated, I'm experienced, I'm thoughtful, and I'm approachable.
Thank you very much, Dean. The final question is for Gary, Dean, Vicki, and Fritz, and the question is, how much importance do you place on shared governance, and how important is it to have a balance among the students, faculty, staff, and community? Ron, would you like to answer that question?
Well, you gave me a choice of questions prior, and the question that I wrote my name alongside is, what do you see as a major challenges? And so, you know, this will be the first time in an educational institution I beg somebody to ask me for a question, and then, because most of the times, you just hope that they never ask you anything. So, if you don't mind, I'd like to ask the question, answer the question that I was supposed to answer. Is that okay?
You may proceed. Yeah.
Is that okay?
You may proceed.
Okay, thank you. Major challenges that I think that we're facing in our educational institutions is relevance. What is a relevance to this education and how do they apply this? There's a lot of education that we do today that doesn't have to do with getting a job, but it has to be relevant. That one of the things that I'm a strong proponent of and everybody that's in business is, is give me the statistics. Tell me what the chances are of getting a job in the field that I am. What does that job pay and what does it do? We do a very poor job of measuring our placement rates, measuring our statistics, and talking about what we need to do. And the other thing is, is how do we balance our budget? Our budget is, the budget that they have at this college is the exact same budget that I deal with every single day, within dollars of what we do. I think that we need to be able to look at this budget and make sure that we balance this and not put the burden on the taxpayers if we can't balance our budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ron.
TC.
All right. So I will repeat the final question. This is for Gary, Dean, Vicky, and Fritz. How much importance do you place on shared governance? And how important is it to have a balance among the students, faculty, staff, and community? I'd like to start on this side this time, so we'll start with Dean.
Well, I think the concept of shared governance is very important in an educational institution. First of all, the students are the customers here and the faculty are, deliver the service. And the faculty has the best, they have the subject matter expertise and experience to determine the curriculum. And it's my understanding that's how it's done. So I think the concept of shared governance is important for an educational institution. I don't think it fits very well for Mr. Nielsen's company nor mine, but I do think an education institution is different.
Thank you very much, Dean. Vicky?
Board of Trustees should continue to be the ultimate governing authority at NIC. With input from the administrative staff, the faculty, and students, should continue to be allotted appropriate time to raise any issues or concerns at the monthly Board of Trustees meetings. Clearly, the trustees are the representatives of the taxpaying residents of Cootney County. They're the ones who elect trustees and trust them to protect their best interests. They're the ones the trustees represent.
Thank you very much, Vicky. Gary?
During my time at NIC, I was an active voice for developing shared governance. When I started at NIC, there was a college senate with no representatives from staff or students. There was no such thing as a staff assembly. And those things were developed over time. And there was even a point where faculty assembly didn't include the professional technical instructors. What was obvious as we developed a shared governance approach is we became much more effective as an institution in solving problems. And we could unify our approach and create better understanding among the different groups on campus so that we really understood the nature of the other groups and had a better understanding of what the solutions would involve. Students need to be an important part of that voice and they are currently part of the college senate.
Thank you very much, Gary. Fritz?
Shared governance is extremely important to a community college like this. The term shared governance is often said, but it can also be misunderstood easily. I place a great deal of importance on it as I believe everyone and every group has a role. Not necessarily does that mean that everyone or every group engages or participates in every step, but rather that everyone gets a seat at the table and every group, point of view, interest gets to be heard. I believe that getting as much information on any subject before a decision is made from various sources leads to an effective, easier decision when it comes time. And when that time comes, the decision needs to come down from board, then that board or whatever it would be, the Board of Trustees, needs to have as much information as they can. The shared governance should be a balance from students, staff, faculty, and the community as near, they're all stakeholders in nearly constant in almost everything.
Thank you very much, Fritz. Now I'd like to transition into some audience questions. Mark Browning is going to be asking each of you the same question. We're going to move from the left to the right and you all have one minute to answer each question. I'm not sure how many questions he's going to ask you, but we'll get going here.
I can yell easy enough, but this is for Andy's television viewers, so. And again, each of you will get these questions, so everybody gets a chance. Y'all get to play on each one of these questions, so. The question is asked, how many times before you declared as a candidate, have you been on campus for events here at North Idaho College? So prior to your filing as a candidate, how many times were you here on campus for recent events?
Is it this left you're starting with or that left?
Which left you want to go with? I'm going to go with stage left. Let's go up, let's start with Dean.
Obviously, I couldn't give you an exact count, but I've been on the campus many, many times for sports events, for meetings. I was on Dr. Bell's long-range planning committee, actually other than her partners in the education committee. It was Joe Morris and what's her name? Avista had the long-range planning committee. And so I've been on the campus many times.
Gary?
I lived on campus for 14 years in the residence. I've been in every building on campus. I've been to every event that the campus has had. I've, I still, even though I've been retired two years, I'm on campus every week.
Vicky?
Well, I too cannot count the number of times. All four of my children attended North Idaho College. And as a mom who supports their children, I was on this campus many, many times. And I also have been since then. I attend sport events as well. So yes, I'm quite familiar with North Idaho College.
Very good. Ron?
I think I'm at 58. We were heavily involved with the discussions around K-Tech and the placement of where it was going to go. If you know that the K-Tech campus was originally purchased by NIC, the 151 acres there. And so we shared a lot of conversations about placement of what was there. I was also involved in partnership with education. I developed a report that we pulled from all the business communities of our future jobs that we submitted to the campus and spent many, many, many hours on site. Spent a lot of times on advisory councils with your professional technicals there and talking to kids on the campus. So I think it's 58, Mark.
Thank you. Fritz?
I don't have an exact number, but as I went to school here for several years, it was, you know, every day for, often for a couple of years. In fact, I wish I had a, kept track of the miles I had driving around looking for a parking spot as many times. Many tanks of gas, also sporting events, other community events. I couldn't even begin to say a number of it, I'd be lying, so I'm not going to try.
Mick?
Well, I know that Gary said he did live on campus. I feel like for the last two years particularly, I live on campus now. I'm here almost daily, it seems like. I mean, there's always some event or some activity going on. As board chair for the last two years, I've been intimately involved and I'm here a lot.
Very good. Thank you. Paul?
Yeah, we talked earlier about the danger sometimes when everybody answers the same question. Yeah, obviously, I don't recall how many times I'm here quite often. This college is embedded in the community. I would be stunned if everyone up here hasn't had wide and broad and deep engagement here. That goes for me.
Thank you, Judy.
Sounds like everybody has said it. I was thinking not only am I on campus involved as a board member, but also in the community. I think that's another aspect we forget, is how many times we're on this campus for Art on the Green, for the performing arts that go on, the athletic events. It really is a wonderful community college and I'm proud to have been on it numerous times.
Thank you.
And Mark, I counted 20 more. I'm on your NIC Booster Club and I come here, so.
So we're up to 78.
Seventy-eight's the answer.
Seventy-eight, all right. We'll check them out. Thank you. They've asked us to have us clarify primarily for the folks at home that each of you were asked prior to the start tonight to select up to four questions that you would be asked. And it said some candidates selected four and some selected less. That's why there was a little bit of, some shifting in somehow of the questioning. So I'm going to get back to the audience questions that were given to us here. And this one. The board has traditionally been nonpartisan. Do you believe this is an important component to true leadership? And if you have chosen to run from a partisan position, why? So we started on the left. I'm going to start on my left this time with Judy and we'll work our way back down towards Dean.
So you've already made it partisan by starting on the left, Mark?
I'm left-handed. My left hand. But well played, that was good.
I think we've, as the title says, it's a community college. Partisanship has no place here because we need to represent and serve all folks of all flavors at all times. I have nothing more to say except it is nonpartisan.
Thank you, Judy. Paul?
I can't disagree enough with that. And my answers in the questions today, I've tried to give you as much as I can, a kind of a little bit of a look into my heart or, you know, maybe that's overblown, but my background, my thoughts, my beliefs and a part of that is, yeah, my political worldview. And so, yeah, I absolutely would like to know each and every one of these candidates, what, where are they coming from politically? Essentially, this is a taxing district. That's pretty important. So, yeah, I don't think it's at all inconsistent with doing your due diligence and researching everyone up here.
Mick?
Well, I believe it should be a nonpartisan race because that's what the state statute says it should be. Just like school districts are nonpartisan also. I've been active in politics pretty much all my life and the people that know me know which party I do represent. But that said, when it comes to this race, it is nonpartisan and I'm running it as a nonpartisan. I don't represent the Democrats, I don't represent the Republicans. I represent the Cootney County residents and the students, the staff, and faculty of this institution.
Thank you. Fritz?
Well, I'd be lying if I didn't say that I had partisan ties as I was on the ballot in spring on the Republican ticket for the legislative race, which I did not win. But that being said, I believe that this is a nonpartisan race, just exactly what Mick had said, is you're representing and you're working together as a nonpartisan board. I believe the partisan politics are designed mostly for like a legislative level where there are two groups or more groups that work things out as parties do. A board trustees with five people, there's just no place for it. And you do have to just listen to all the residents, taxpayers, community members, and everyone you serve in a nonpartisan fashion.
Thank you. Ron?
I understand that this is a partisan, a nonpartisan race and that's why I wear a blue shirt and a red tie. But saying that, that I believe that my conservative nature and what I stand for is a Republican. And I'm proud to say I'm a Republican. That doesn't mean I'm asking you to put the R behind my name when I go to the election ballot. I'm just telling you that I share in these conservative values with accountability, transparency, and I would really like to be able to have people know that when you elect a person here, that he's going to stand for the values there. That clearly, that as we look at the three community colleges here in the state of Idaho graded by there, that when you get an F on transparency and accountability, that's typically something that you would consider that would not happen if you had somebody that shared in those values. So it's, I understand it's not a nonpartisan race, but I'm a Republican, proud of it.
Very good. Thank you. Vicky?
Yes, I agree. It should be a nonpartisan race. It's very important that we remember as trustees who we are here to serve. And it's the community and Cootney County, so it should not be a partisan race.
Thank you. Gary?
Definitely nonpartisan. I think that's an appropriate role for trustees. I think it needs to be more about caring about the college, about the community, and about students. And if we work as trustees to develop the strongest potential possible for the college, it's going to do the best job possible in serving those communities and students.
Thank you. And Dean?
It is a nonpartisan election and as it should be. I guess I would add that it'd be unrealistic to think that if someone has identified strongly with one party or another, that that party's members may be disproportionately supportive of the person. But the position is nonpartisan and has to be that way.
Very good. I probably should have started right in the middle with that one and then worked out on each side just to be fair. Our next question says, what impact do you see to North Idaho College from online education going forward? And I'm actually, I'm going to start in the middle and I'm going to work out. So Fritz, I'll go to you, and then Ron, then Mick, Vicky, Paul, Gary, Judy, Dean. There'll be a test on that order later, so Fritz, I'm going to start with you.
Thank you. Online education, I think, is just going to grow exponentially. Just like the, we heard about the Luna laws and those relevance to it. I'd like to see the community colleges, though, taking a role if we are going to have online education versus a company not here, not in the area, for a few reasons. One, it's our community college. And just because, I've personally taken online college courses through Idaho State. I find them very beneficial, very educational, and they work for me. Do they work for everybody? Absolutely not. That's a one-size-fits-all, which may not work. But I see, I think North Idaho College should continue to grow their online programs, embrace their online programs as they'll, like everything else they touch, it'll be nothing but successful.
Thank you. Ron?
I agree with Fritz is that the impact of online education is we're going that way. We can, no matter what you say, our kids are more advanced in technology. The younger they are, the smarter they are with technology. And that these kids can learn at a faster pace than we could. So clearly, this online education, the opportunity for these kids to have access to some of the specialty teachers, maybe a German teacher that is outside the campus, I think that it's going to be a continued growing trend and support it very heavily.
Thank you. Mick?
Online education's essential. I mean, it's not going to go away, it's going to grow. My oldest daughter got her master's program completed at the University of Phoenix, which is an online program for the most part. It's also a for-profit program. And I think there's a lot of different entities that are going to be offering online opportunities in the future. And I think the biggest question we have is what's the quality going to be? If we're going to have an online class offered that the quality is questionable, how's that going to be transferable? I think North Idaho College and the rest of the community colleges in Idaho have an extreme opportunity here to look at online. It's one of our fastest-growing areas in, at North Idaho College now. But to look at online for the residents of Cootney, or for residents of Idaho, not just Cootney County, and take away the walls and the borders and be able to offer for students throughout the state.
Very good. Thank you. Vicky?
I agree. I think online education at the college level is unstoppable. And I agree that it's essential. Not only for young students, but we're talking about families who want to increase their level of education, for better jobs. To be able to sit down and do online courses with a college such as NIC is, it's the way, I think, our education is going for the future, and it's very necessary.
Very good. Paul?
You know, I'd agree with most of what's been said here. I mean, it's more efficient. It allows more efficient education. It's absolutely the way we're going to go. It does challenge the institution and some of the funding mechanisms when you have the ability to dramatically expand your service area overnight and then you have a funding option built in that devalues students from outside the county in terms of their effort or the, you know, remuneration, then that's a problem. So, I mean, it'll present some challenges, but it's just a tremendous opportunity.
Gary?
NIC has been involved with online education for some time. And it's an essential part of the spectrum of way that NIC delivers education. It's important. But it's not the end-all that a lot of people want it to be. It's, again, from a student's perspective, it provides opportunities for students that might not otherwise have access to education. That's why it's so important. But there's many students it's not a good fit for. And we need to make sure that the students that are accessing online education truly understand how that works and how to get the most out of it. So again, from a student's standpoint, it serves as a convenient measure of acquiring a higher education, but it also, it's one we need to approach cautiously. It can be more beneficial in terms of the facilities that are required for education, but I don't know that it's truly more efficient. If you talk to instructors that are involved with online education, there's an awful lot of work that goes into that, just as much as with classroom instruction.
Thank you. Judy?
As a board in our governance role, I think we need to think about budgeting and the balance of budgeting for providing those online classes. Understanding the different learning techniques will require different kinds of online classes as well as those lab classes, the onsite, hands-on aspect of education. There's no substitute for that. So it will be a governance issue of balancing that I think will be the most challenging part of online learning.
And Dean?
I think it's pretty much all been said. I think it's pretty much all been said. Like I say, I agree, and there just are gonna be adjustments needing to be made as it becomes a bigger and bigger part of the delivery system.
Thank you. Vicki, I'm gonna start with you, and then I'm not gonna tell the rest of you where I'm going, so you're gonna have to pay attention. Who or what do you think is NIC's biggest competitor? Who or what is NIC's biggest competitor?
Hmm, can you make me draw a blank on that one?
Good.
Can you come back to me?
Yeah, we can do that. Ron, I'm gonna go next door to you.
No question, from my perspective, it's Spokane Community College. Joe Dunlap and their team over there in Spokane took it to us, as we say. And that clearly with the success that they had over there, the relationship they have with the community, and the attitude of the community over there to the support there, we lacked that here. Now with the addition of Joe Dunlap, I think we're gonna see some tremendous reduction of the traffic that's going west across the line. I think you're gonna see a relationship with the business community growing. And so I think that, that if you can't beat 'em, hire 'em, that's my attitude, so.
Thank you. Vicki, you ready, or you want me to go one more?
Well, obviously, he has a lot more information on this than I do, so I'm gonna have to beg on that one.
Thank you. Dean, I'm gonna come down to you. Who or what do you think is NIC's biggest competitor?
I'm not sure I know, but I probably would defer to my friend Ron, who identifies Spokane Community College.
Very good. How about you, Paul?
I'm struggling to understand the idea of education as a competitive. It isn't a zero-sum game. The only competitor NIC has is NIC. NIC's gotta continually be involved in, in performing, increasing in performance, you know, cost efficiency, the quality of its offerings. Maybe that's naive, but, but I kinda like to think education's collegial and it's not a competitive sport.
Very good, thank you. Mick?
I think it's a very competitive sport. We're one of the best teams in the country, so. But that's a whole different competition. Education is very competitive. There's limited number of dollars out there, and there's a lot of institutions that wanna serve those limited number of dollars. I think NIC's biggest competition depends on which kind of program you're looking at. For every program, we're gonna have different competitors. The for-profit is a rapidly growing part of education. Online is rapidly growing. I mean, you've taken away the borders. It wasn't that many years ago, if you wanted to go to college and you were from Cootney County, you didn't have a lot of options, and North Idaho College was one of those. You take away the walls, and you make it online. I can have a student here taking classes anywhere on the planet. So there's a lot of opportunities there.
Very good, thank you. Gary?
In my experience, that we have just as many students coming over from Washington to attend NIC as we have local students going over to Spokane. So I know that we've, we've been pretty successful in meeting the, the needs of students, and I think the, the true issue we have with competition is maintaining the quality and integrity and connection of our programs to the communities around here. If we continue to do that well, we're gonna be competitive with whoever. That's been, certainly been the case. We've had huge jumps in enrollment of students lately, demonstrating that we are being pretty capably competitive with other institutions. If we don't lose sight of what has brought those students to us, and pay attention to what students needs, I, need, I think we'll continue to do a good job in that area.
Very good. Judy?
I was thinking, and many people have touched on it, it would seem to me it is the global delivery of educational systems, programs. As you already said, we can take a class about, from anybody, anywhere, anytime. I see that as a, a good competition, because it sharpens us up as to what we can do and what we need to do. But the biggest competitor from, in my thinking, and as I read about what's coming down the pike from universities around the world offering programs, we will need to be sure that we understand the local needs and can really deal with them.
Thank you. And Fritz?
Well, I've got to back clean up here on that. I think it depends on, as Mick said, which program you're looking at. On the professional technical side, I believe SEC, just as Ron had pointed out, nursing, for instance, they offer a, a program very similar to the one here at NIC, so, and in their close proximity, that's obvious, that that's gonna be, I believe, North Idaho College's biggest competitor. On the academic side, I think it's getting bigger and bigger, to where it's gonna be anywhere just globally, we've heard that. But I think more at the now and here, I think it's the other institutions in the state that are gonna be competing, or are currently competing. As I indicated earlier, I attended Idaho State University online. Boise State, University of Idaho, any of the other Idaho colleges, simply because of the tuition costs, you could get the in-state tuition on the online venue.
Very good, thank you. North Idaho College serves the five northern counties, but yet the taxpayers of Cootney County are the only ones that are assessed a property tax to help fund the operation here. Would you support expanding the community college district? And if you do support that, how would you go about, I guess, working that support within the, the legal bounds that we're allowed to do? So Mick, I'm gonna start with you.
Thank you. Would I support expanding the boundaries? I think the first thing we need to do is to address the out-of-state, or, excuse me, out-of-district tuition. Currently, the out-of-district tuition is $500 per student who comes to North Idaho College or any community college from a district that does not have property tax associated with it. So any student that comes to North Idaho College outside of Cootney County, their county reimburses North Idaho College $500 for that student. And those funds come from the state liquor fund, that's how the county pays for them. Unfortunately, that $500 amount was set in 1982, and it hasn't changed since 1982. But the cost of education has. We need to address that, and we need to have the state legislature address that. Second of all is that there's a number of counties that are upside down. They're paying way more dollars out to their institutions than they're taking in from state liquor funds. We need to address that before we start reaching out into other dis, other counties to expand the district. I think if we could look at the out-of-district tuition, that takes care of a lot of the expansion we need to look at.
Vicki, I'm gonna come down to you, and, and gonna come back your way and get, give you a chance to get back in on this. Would you support, support expansion?
Well, I, I no doubt, I think Cootney County should be helped with this. As you said, we bear the brunt of the taxes. But as, as has been said down here, I think we need to look at all the factors before we can simply say straight across the board, we're going to call, you know, have other people pay more. So, yes, I see the need to take some of the burden away from Cootney County.
Very good. Dean?
Well, as Mick pointed out, the, the problem is that the other counties are getting somewhat of a free ride by the $500 per student payment. And that has been there for some time, and it should be increased to be a little more fair. As far as expanding the, the district, I think that'd be problematic, given the low population, the sparsely populated counties that make up the other five. You know, if you had, like, College of Southern Idaho that has Twin Falls, Jerome Counties, if we had Cootney and Bonner, it might be more reasonable than to expect to get all five counties.
Very good. Ron?
Ooh, that's a, that's a live one. My first reaction is no. I think that for you to be talking about expanding your territory, when you don't even know how, what students are gonna pick up, I think that if that's the case, I think you put it to a vote. If you can show the value of going to the outlined areas and see what it's gonna do to, for them to help better educate their kids, and you have the statistical data to be able to justify this grab that you wanna go for, and you can sell it to them, they'll vote themselves a taxation. When we went to, when we did K-Tech, if you look at K-Tech, K-Tech was an example of a community understanding the value, and they came out at one of the worst days of the stock market and passed the highest levy rate, I mean, the highest vote rate ever, because that they understood exactly what it was. So the answer to our question is, is that unless that you can get them to vote for, no, I would say no.
Judy?
In a way, we already provide services to counties outside of, of Cootney County. And one of the ways we do that, because the funding inequity is, is real, and it's one we as a board have talked about addressing, and that would need to be through the legislature. But also, we've seen communities say, we'll provide the facilities, we'll do other ways to help reduce the cost, and in fact, honor our responsibility to help with the funding. So I think we have some, some work ahead of us as a board to figure out some of that, that logistical funding effort, but not to ignore the fact that communities are already responding by saying, we want you to come, we will do, we will find ways to help make it cost-effective.
Paul?
I would agree with much of what's been said. I think Judy raises a, a point that's actually a kind of dangerous in a way. Communities may well come to us and say, we wanna participate in creation of the facilities, but then we're on the hook for the, the funding diversity between their students and our students. And ultimately, when I say we, I mean the taxpayers of, of Cootney County. I mean, I think that decision should follow a clarity in the mission of the school, and not be more a matter of, you know, how big a turf can we get, you know, some bragging rights or something like that. But again, as Mick and Dean have pointed out, the funding disparity is a real problem right now and needs to be addressed immediately.
Fritz?
Well, I can't just say that I would openly support what was a turf grab, if we heard that, just because of a funding disparity. I think that's a, that's a, something that I wouldn't embrace at all. I would have to follow along the lines of what Ron had said, and you have to let the taxpayers of the individual areas decide to sign up for it. I don't think that, I think logistically it'd be a problem, and I think that, I think you'd probably end up needing an advisory vote. I bet you'd get a big sounding no from the other four counties. So I guess I would probably say no, I would not be supportive of that right now.
Gary, did I get to you on this question or not? I, I thought I had you on the list, it's still needing to get there, so let's go there.
I appreciate that that's kind of a complicated issue, and there really isn't a simple answer. I, I think in many ways, we've been trying to do a reasonable job of spreading out the, the funding responsibility for the college across those five counties. But I think before we could make any big leaps that are suggested by that, I think we need to make sure that there's value there that we're offering those other counties. And if we do provide the value, how well is that communicated to those people so that they would understand and appreciate the fact that they are contributing from a taxpayer standpoint? I think doing it on a, on a per-student basis, like we've been doing, is one way to deal with that in somewhat of an equitable fashion. But as Mick pointed out, we're kind of really behind the times in terms of updating those fees, so it truly reflects what those students are receiving.
Thank you. You mentioned complex issues. I've got another one here that, that someone has, one, two, three, four, oh, closing statements at eight, ten, what time is it? Eight o'clock. All right, so we've got about 10 minutes left. So someone here has a four-part question about remediation. I'll let everybody take a deep breath. But I would like to just get your thoughts. What do you think about remediation? How are we doing it? And what would you change, if it was possible to change, and our approach on remediation? So, do you wanna start, Dean?
You've got to repeat the question, please, I didn't understand what.
Remediation. We get a number of students that come to our door. Our average age is 27 years old. We get a number of students who need math, and often English, and other areas of remediation before they're ready for college-level work. What are your thoughts on remediation?
Well, it's unfortunate, first of all, that we have to do as much as we do. But I think it's essential that we have the remediation available to the students. I know that recently, they're, they're teaching math out at K-Tech, and finding juniors in high school that do math at the sixth or eighth level, you know, there's something wrong. But while that's the case, and we're getting students coming down here that don't have the basic skills, we have to address it, I think, and address it as we have been.
Very good, thank you. Judy?
I think we need to, and we struggle as a board often, distinguishing between students who've just come directly from the public school system within Idaho or anywhere in the world, with those folks who are returning to the campus. Because the folks that come from high school, I think we as a community college have, have begun to dialogue with the local school districts about, we need you, local high school districts, to in fact, try and upgrade what you're sending out in, in the world. And we've talked about that from employment point of view, too. Folks aren't as tuned up as they should be. But there's a real distinction with the, the students who are coming back to NIC who have in fact been out in the workplace. They may be changing careers, so they're gonna need new and different skills. And as a community college, I think that's a remarkable opportunity we have to help folks gain the skills they need to enter their classes, to provide them good employment opportunities.
Thank you. Let's go next door here to Paul. Your thoughts on remediation?
Yeah. Well, my thoughts are, I endorse the state's thoughts on this. It's been a major issue with the state. The state has, and the governor has, a specific plan. He wants universities and colleges to reduce their remediation activities by 50%, and a very specific timeline, by 2020. And, and there's a five-point plan, the, you know, the Workforce Investment Act under that strategic plan, they have a five-point plan for exactly how they do it. And I think, you know, things like opening up common core standards and aligning what the, the high school is giving to the entrance requirements of the, the college do promise to undoubtedly reduce, you know, significantly the amount of remediation we do. It's an interesting topic. I mean, in our capital improvement plan, we call for almost quadrupling, you know, and, and threefold increase in the square footage we use for remedial activities. I don't see remediation as a quote-unquote opportunity. I really see it as a failure. The K-12 districts will do it. There's no question, this institution will do it, because it needs to do it. But that's very different than looking at it as a profit center, or, you know, something we need to embrace.
Thank you. Gary?
While I was supervising the testing center at NIC, I did an analysis of some of the data and discovered that about 90% of incoming students were not ready for college-level math, and that about 50% of students were not ready for college-level writing courses. I don't think those statistics have changed a great deal recently. It's pretty obvious that, that there is a need for remediation in order to make sure that students entering NIC can succeed. To me, that's the bottom line. We have to do what we have to do in order to make sure that students have access to the college courses that they need in order to complete degrees and certificates. To find a real solution, I think NIC needs to be partnered with the local school districts to try to make sure that the school districts are understanding what the college-level requirements and levels of curriculum need to be, and making sure that, that students are getting that opportunity before they come to NIC.
Very good, thank you. Mick?
There's a statistic that says, for every year that you're away from learning math, you lose 50% of your math recall. So that means, I've been away a long time, so I must not remember anything. But that said, we have a lot of students, you said this earlier, our average student age is 27. We have a tremendous number of students that are many years away from their last math class or their last writing class. But one of the tenants of our community college is accessibility. We want students to be able to have accessibility, come in, get the education they, they desire, but they have to be able to succeed also. If they are not gonna be successful in math or English or other curriculum, they need to have their remedial skills to, to get caught back up, so that they're ready to take on a full load when the time comes. If we all had, all we had were incoming freshmen right out of high school, it'd be a whole different curriculum than what we have at North Idaho College.
Vicki?
Yes, I agree. It's unfortunate that we have to have remedial education at the college level, but it has proven to be necessary at this time. Students, whether they're 27, 35, doesn't matter, if they desire an education, they've set their mind to a job, you know, something they want to do. And as Mick said, you step away from high school, you have not gone to college for a number of years, sit down and try to do your algebra, and, you know, it's a little bit difficult. So yes, I think it's necessary, and I would retain remedial education at the community level.
Thank you. Ron?
Well, clearly, that we have two distinct different customers that we're servicing. The customer that comes directly out of high school, that was paid for, that we paid for this education for them to be prepared to go to college, they got passing grades. There's gotta be some way that we can go back and tap back into our K-12 system and say, we, you delivered this product to us without the, the educational needs. There's gotta be some way that we can fix this problem by holding them accountable in some way. But clearly, when, when a student that comes from outside the education system for a long period of time, at that point, he walks in, that remediation's necessary, but I think he needs to participate, or she needs to participate, in that remediation cost, because that they're coming into a class where, with the assumption that they are already at this level.
Fritz?
Well, I couldn't agree more that we do have two distinct customers with that. And it'd be interesting to see as these, if these educational reforms stay, if they do anything and put a dent in our ones out of high school, the freshmen coming in, if they are not needing the kind of remediation. It, it goes without saying that someone's been away for school, whether it's two years or 22 years, they're gonna need some type of remediation or assistance. But it doesn't mean that everybody has to sit through a whole semester class of math. It might be two weeks, it might be two sessions. of math. It might be two weeks, it might be two sessions. So I believe maybe a, a more fast-paced or something that is, is easily positioned for each individual student, self-paced and online, something that they can get through in a fast, rapid amount of time if they need to. And I believe that they should definitely help incur some of the costs of that.
Thank you. We've got one last question here, and we've got about six minutes. So my math isn't great. I'm a recovering journalist. So I'm just going to say, let's keep this to about 45 seconds each. I think we can get through it. But somebody just got the recovering journalist joke back here. So. Let's talk athletics. North Idaho College offers a fairly robust athletic offering to students as a way to come here. What are your thoughts on athletics in terms of continuing, expanding, or maybe scaling back the athletics? I'm going to start with Fritz and then go to Ron. We're going to work from the inside out.
I actually had something prepared for that. Is it possible that changes are needed here? Maybe. What are those? Well, just the types of decisions. They should employ that shared governance concept. I think some changes may end up being economically driven, especially in these times. While others may be driven by spectator attendance up or down. Some changes that may be small, maybe big, or maybe somewhere in between. But I believe as they do, as a lot of people in this community do, that athletics play a huge part historically and an important role continually here at Life at NIC. Not just for the students, but for the entire community. This can't be ignored. Should we subtract or add? Well, that's something that should be done very, very cautiously and very thoroughly, definitely using that shared governance.
Thank you. Ron?
Well, obviously, if I sit on the NIC's Athletic Booster Board, I must be supportive of this. I'd also say, if you drop sports here, who's going to give Big Al a job? I believe that, that the athletic program here generates what you need in any business institution, which is some type of a team spirit. Clearly, athletics is one of those that brings the whole education system together, professional, technical, academic, or elective education together with one thing, which is for the, for the, the school itself. I believe it brings a lot of pride in the school, and I support athletics at all levels.
Very good. Mick?
I'm a huge athletic supporter. Love them. How'd you get your laugh back for you? No, I, I believe athletics are a great part of this institution. We actually have phenomenal teams, and I think the quality and the accountability has gotten much better since Al Williams has been the athletic director here. That said, we still have problems. We have facilities that are in major need of either repair or replacement. We have a gymnasium that was built in the 1930s that isn't even a regulation floor. It's too short. When we, we realized that this year, we bought a new floor, and it was too small, or too big to put in, in the facility. We have competition that's at the highest level, and we have teams that are competing at that level. We have a women's basketball team that was a national champion, but they're playing in outdated facilities. We need to step up and give them the same quality that we would for any other program on this campus.
Thank you. Vicki?
Yes. I'm all for the athletic program expanding. I personally would like to see baseball come back. I like sailing, and I know we have sailboats here at NIC. I think it would be good to perhaps develop that to an intramural league, participate in some of the yacht club events. I think it would provide an even more well-rounded athletic program for our students here in our community.
Thank you. Paul?
Well, the sports aren't just fun. I mean, I, I know in, in my professional life, some of the people who are the best team players tell me everything they learn. They learn, you know, playing collegiate sports. So, yeah, it's, it's edifying for the players and for the people who watch it. It teaches you how to, you know, lose with dignity, win with grace, and all that. Yeah, absolutely. As far as specific programs, as I go around the county, they're demanding one program. They're demanding field hockey. You know that, don't you, Judy?
You betcha, Paul.
But, um, no, I, I wouldn't know specifically about adding, certainly not subtracting, but adding a sport. That's, it's a curricular decision. It really is the athletic department's lead.
Gary?
NIC Athletics has done a real good job of, of being competitive and providing pride and, and a sense of excellence to the institution. But I think it's important not to lose sight of other aspects that provide value to the college, including making sure there's a focus on student-athlete academic success, positive teamwork, individual development, citizenship, all of those things. I think since, since those teams are under the microscope a great deal and provide an opportunity to teach and demonstrate things to other students and to the community, that needs to be an important part of the program.
Dean, I'm going to go to you next.
I think that excellent athletic program is a very important part of the college, and it should be, should be maintained. I think part of the question was, should programs be added or subtracted? And we have to be very careful there because of the Title IX implications and the budget considerations involved in, in doing that. So we have to be very judicious about adding anything, for example.
Judy, we're going to give you the last word on this one.
So when does the field hockey program come back, was the question?
Upon my election.
I think you've identified Title IX is an important part of my perception of, of the value of athletics. And in my lifetime, it's been a real factor. I would also emphasize diversity. One of the things that athletics brings is often folks from, from further away than, than just our local students. It teaches teamwork. We understand all that. I think it's also interesting to realize that most of our athletic students have better grade point, higher than the average grade point. And so it's a testimonial to the value of, of teamwork. And, and I would say again, Title IX is another important part of it. You've covered most of the topics, yes, for athletics.
Thank you all very much. Yes, thank you all very much. We definitely appreciate your valuable input, and we'd like to transition into closing statements. You'll have two minutes each to say anything that you feel may be important, maybe you didn't, you weren't able to include in the questions. So Asnik would like to just thank you first of all, and this has been a great opportunity. So we'd like to hear what you have to say in conclusion. We'll start with Dean and work our way down, please.
Thank you. And I guess I would say thank you to the panel here of questioners and to those who turned out this evening to participate. I don't know that I can add much to what I have said, other than to say that I am excited and interested in serving on the Board of Trustees. I believe the institution is excellent right now. Let's keep it that way and improve it if we can. And I think that my combination of business experience and academic experience and legislative experience for that matter, I think that I may even be of some value in that area in lobbying the legislature for additional funding, if the administration shows to have me go down there. But we have to get the funding from the state back to the historical levels. It just can't be continuing to decline, and that's going to be an uphill battle, I recognize. But we have to work towards that. Once again, thanks for coming out tonight. Appreciate it, and...
Thank you, Dean. Gary?
Thank you again, Asnik, for sponsoring this event, and thank you for the people that came out to listen. Almost everything I've learned about what makes a college successful, I've learned from students. It's the, it's how well we connect to meeting the needs of students, how well we identify the needs of students, how well we help students recognize the needs they have themselves. And I think that's an important aspect of how a college develops its direction and maintains its purpose and quality. That's an aspect I feel like I bring to the board better than other candidates. I know students. I know how effectively the college can, can connect with students. I understand the obstacles that students face on a, on a regular basis. I admire and respect students for the great deal of effort and sacrifice they put into pursuing an education. I think that's an important, could be a very important part of the board.
Thank you very much, Gary. Vicki?
Well, I also would like to thank Asnik. This was a wonderful opportunity to, to meet with all of you who came out tonight. Thank you for your time. I would only ask that you vote for me for seat C, and know that I have the intention of serving the community. I have no personal agenda. I just want to be of service to North Idaho College and the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki. Ron?
Contrary to what some people might say at this college is, "I'm not here to hurt the college. I believe I'm here to help the college." That I bring business experience, I bring community relationships to this college. I have five children. One of my sons has a bachelor's degree. The other one is working on his doctorate degree. I have two with associate's degrees, and two of these kids that are on now that have their certified nurse's assistance degree, as well as a welding degree, both from NIC College. I was NIC's number-one customer four out of five years. That relationship was always a little bit strained because that they never treated me like a customer, and I would like to be able to be in a position to help Mr. Dunlap bring this relationship back to this community. That I believe we need to build this professional technical campus on the prairie. The school owns this. They paid it with the tax dollars, and that's the right place to be. So we need to end this discussion and get on with building this professional technical campus out alongside a campus that's already established there. I look forward to working with the current board that's here. I look forward to working with the educational institution, and I think that I can help it even be a little bit better than it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
And oops, seat C, forgot.
Thank you, Ron. Fritz?
Thank you. I'd also like to take this time to thank everybody. I think Asnik has done a fantastic job making this a very professional forum. I'd like to also thank the fellow candidates, especially the ones I'm running, running against, for participating with this with me. One of the things when we all go to the polls this November is, I don't think you can go wrong if whoever you vote for. That's a good thing. I don't see it, nothing screams out at me. While I only really personally know one of the candidates, I've got an opportunity to meet him, and I think they're all fine people. What sticks out that you should vote for me? Well, I'm asking for seat C, for you to vote for me, for a couple of reasons. One is, I want to serve the public. I've demonstrated, and I have for many years, my dedication to public service. I know how to do the right thing and when it needs to be done. One of the reasons I'm doing this is that I've talked about my family and my children. That makes me a little bit selfish. I'm selfish for my family. I want the best for my children. I want the very, very best in education for my children at all levels, at the K through 12 and the post-secondary. But I can bring some of that selfishness here to this college if I get elected as an NIC trustee, and help move this forward. NIC is not a great school. It's an excellent, outstanding, top-notch school, but it can't go anywhere but up. And I want to be part of that. I want to bring some of that with me. I want to bring some of that and help it go to the next direction. I think the staff and the president that are currently here, finest people that you can get. Be, be advocates for them. Help them. Do what they need to do to continue to push this college to the absolute best in, best in the world, if that's what it needs to be. It could, it's going to be the best in the college or the country if it isn't already. I want to hear from the constituents, the community, the students, the faculty, the staff, everyone. I want to hear what everyone has to say about this community college and bring forth that. I want to be open, honest, available. I want to be approachable. I'm excited about where NIC is right now. I'm extremely excited about where it's going to be headed in the future, and I'm excited to be an opportunity to be a part of that. Thank you for your time. Fritz Whedon-Haw. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Fritz. Mick?
Well, thank you once again for hosting this. It's, it's a great chance for people to get out and, and have an opportunity to, to see all the candidates. You know, there's three different slots being challenged here tonight. I am running for seat B as in boy, not C or A, but B as in boy. I said in my opening statement, North Idaho College is not broken. This institution is one of the best in the country, and we want it to continue that way. I think what we need to do is we need to find the person that's going to direct this college in a way that can work with the current board, continue to lead for the future, for the unknown, because it's going to be inevitable. We're going to have future change. My biggest area of reason for running is because I've learned over the past 12 years what it takes to be a successful leader on a board like this. I would have never thought 12 years ago that we'd see some of the changes we have seen. Online education is an exact one of those. I mean, 12 years ago, we hardly had any students on online education. But it's changing constantly, and we need a, we need a board that's going to have the vision to continue to see what the future is going to be. Four years from now, as this group of three trustees ends their, their term, there will be other changes, and we need to make sure that we have the leadership, the knowledge, and the experience to continue to direct North Idaho College to be the best it can possibly be. Once again, I thank you for having us. I only regret that my opponent wasn't here. It's very difficult to make a decision when you only hear from one candidate. My opponent has not shown up for a board meeting, nor has he shown up for any of the forums. I don't know what his reason for filing was, if he's not going to be a candidate. But the bottom line is, two weeks from tonight, or today, you have a chance to go to the polls and choose between somebody that's been here, working day in and day out for 12 years, or somebody that's got their name on the ballot that's never been to anything.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very much, Mick. Paul?
You may be getting tired of hearing thank yous, but you, you, thank you, you, you deserve them. It's not a pro forma thing. This is, this is a neat, you know, again, democracy in action. It brings a tear to my eye. But also, the other thing, we haven't heard each other speak very often. In fact, this is really the first significant forum we've, we've been in, and I think it's fascinating. I think the Coeur d'Alene Press put out a call for people to throw their name in the hat for these, these positions, and boy, did they ever, I mean, I'm impressed by the quality of the people up here, probably none more so than the woman sitting next to me. All the same, you have heard differences in, in outlook and differences in directions for this institution, and I think they are significant. Again, I'd repeat, I'm running for, you know, fiscal conservatism, for geographic representation, and probably most of all, after this evening, for clarity in the mission of, of the college, which I, I think is a discussion that needs to happen in a prominent way and be documented in a strategic plan with something other than we are committed to excellence in education. But anyway, thank you again.
Thank you, Paul. Judy?
Thanks to NIC, Asnik students, and to the taping that we're doing so that citizens who couldn't make it tonight will also be able to, to learn with us. I have years of unique experience to guide NIC on the path ahead. One of the most important aspects of the college experience is to sharpen critical thinking, to read, to listen, to analyze, to form independent conclusions. People with a college certificate or degree will earn 75% more during their lifetime. By 2018, 61% of Idaho jobs will require a post-secondary certificate or degree. Currently, 32% of our citizens qualify. Community colleges like NIC are the most cost-efficient path to providing local higher education. My opponent said the board has raised taxes by 107%. That political rhetoric is simply not true. Your board has managed through a recession where enrollment grew 46%. We kept enrollment open without caps and held the college operations budget growth to 23%. You can see my analysis of the college budget on my webpage, myer-nic.com. And I, of course, have handouts if anyone would want to see them. My opponent's criticized NIC's remedial education program as too much. NIC is a college for everyone, and while we all wish fewer students needed remedial work, we must provide it for students to succeed. This is a nonpartisan race. I believe there is no place for hard-right philosophy in a community college agenda. I don't have a political agenda. I have a student success agenda. The college will have new challenges ahead. I have extensive experience. I have a passion for education, and I welcome your support for position A.
Thank you very much, Judy. Thank you to all of the candidates for your very, very valuable input, and thank you all for attending. This is so important to us, the student body, the faculty and staff, as well as the administration and the community. So thank you so much for attending. It's a wonderful opportunity to hear from these candidates tonight, and I think this definitely will help decide the election. So, you know, Asnik would like to thank all the candidates, as I said, as well as Bob Koep, the community representative, Pat Lippert, our instructor representative, Aaron Norville, our staff representative, Matt Sebby with the Student Union Building for helping set up, as well as the Student Union workers for putting this on. And it, it helped so much, and we thank you so much for that. We'd like to thank Heather Erickson, the Asnik advisor. She put in a lot of input to this, so thank you very much, Heather. I'd like to thank Mark Browning for helping out with this. He did a great job with those audience questions. Thank you very much. I'd like to thank Sherri Simkins. She helped me with the planning for this. So thank you very much to Sherri. And thank you all for attending once again and participating in this forum. So with that, we're going to end this Board of Trustees forum, and thank you very much for your time.